Okay, we're recording now.
Okay, okay, thank you Kevin. Okay, so welcome everyone to the 149th meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees. As you know, we were supposed to meet in Cancun, Mexico, but with the whole situation related to the coronavirus, we finally decided to have a virtual meeting. So in that sense, you know, it's also good that we get some experience. With virtual meetings, we did that already two or three years ago and it went quite okay. So let's see how everything works this time. The downside, of course, is like we, we were not able to go there and we were looking forward to, to meeting with some local people, especially or in particular, the, the local chapter there, we will have them present something. So next time we will be able to, to do that, we hope. So Luis, again, I'm sorry for not being there. Having said that, let's start with the agenda with point number one. We have all trustees here except for Mika. She sent her apologies. So any declaration of conflict of interest given the current agenda from anyone? Okay, so I don't see any. So let's move on. So number two, point number two on the agenda is basically to document the resolutions we have approved by eVote. Yeah, thanks for showing the agenda, Kevin. It's to basically document the resolutions we have passed since last time. And as you know nowadays, we are making a lot of decisions between, in between meetings, since we changed the, the rules for approving resolutions some time ago. So here just, I always make this clarification, but anyway, so that we are all on the same page. This is just to document the resolutions. The resolutions have been officially passed already. So John, do you want to add something or?
No, I mean, everybody's already voted for all of these, so you're seeing them again.
Okay, good. Thank you. So for the record, these are the resolutions we passed since last time. I give you a couple of minutes to read everything. Yeah, they are as well. So we updated a couple of things. Maybe it's worth mentioning, the update to the conflict of interest policy. This was kind of, you know, something that we were planning to do for, for the last three years at least. And finally, we got around to agreeing on how to do that. So we finally approved those changes, which I think is really good. Okay, good. So moving to the, to point number three on the agenda, which is to get a report from Eduardo on the Chapter Advisory Council Steering Group. So Kevin, if you could promote Eduardo. So Glenn, no, Olga, Olga hasn't done yet the non-com report. That will become later. Yes, Glenn, please.
All right, just testing my Ottawa. Thanks. Hi, everybody. So I take it I have to leave then as well.
Okay, let me check because yeah, we have an executive, right? A close part of that. Just give me one second. No, the presentation, Olga's presentation is in the open, actually. Yeah, you don't have to leave. Because basically, I mean, she's going to be presenting the demographics, who applied, how many candidates, all that. The geographical distribution, gender balance, all that. So you don't have to leave Glenn. That's okay.
Great, thanks.
But thanks for checking Glenn. Okay, good. Eduardo, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you. We cannot see you, but we can hear you.
I got my video on, but apparently it's not working.
It's not working. Okay.
Well, let me see if I can get this over camera.
If you can fix it real quick, otherwise we can go ahead.
I, no, no, for some reason it's not working. Oh, I know why it's not working because it's, I got it off.
Oh, now we see you, Eduardo. Okay. So just to clarify, Luis was asking exactly the same question as Glenn. No, you don't have to leave the presentation because Olga's presentation is going to be in the open and we will just be giving public information on the non-com process. So nothing confidential. So nobody has to leave. And this is going to be an open presentation, recorded and distributed as any other. So, so yes. Okay, Eduardo, but anyway, without further ado, thanks for joining and the floor is yours, you know, looking forward to your report.
Okay, can I have the slide presentation?
Yeah, Kevin will put them up in a second. Yeah, there we go.
So basically, this is an update from the, from last time. So can we get to the second slide, please? Thank you. Okay. So I'm just going to give you a small introduction of the team, just so you know who, who we are. And then we're going to jump into the advice work. We will go through the previous one, which was the one previously, then the one that we sent in 2019. And then we will get into the second set that we sent this year. And at the end, I just wanted to give you a heads up of, you know, things that we're looking at. You know, that we are going to start discussing going forward in the committee. So this is the people in, we are nine or off of us, the officers, well, that's I'm the chair and the secretary is Atish Babu. And Oliver is the vice chair. I don't know if they're in here, but I want to welcome them. I sent them the link and invited all the advisory, the steering committee to participate today, just in case they want to add, if I miss something. So can we have the next? So last year, we sent three advices that had to do, one with the events, you know, and having ISO gatherings during events, which is happening. I mean, I have seen that happening. In especially during the ICAN meetings, we send information about the fellowship program on the Hcap. And the advice in relation to the non-comm and the procedure that was being used there, which, you know, we put a procedure, an AHOG procedure. Probably this year, we'll make it final, you know, just to have it there. And so we're planning to come back and ask you formally around April timeframe, maybe later, depends, you know, to give us some status on this. And the main reason is so, you know, we can start closing this advice in terms that, you know, it's, they have been finalized one way or another. You know, somehow, so I, you know, I don't think we should keep this open here and pending on, on things here. We want to move forward with, you know, whatever is going to happen in this advice. So we can close them or, you know, keep circling back from time to time. So that's about the 2019 advice on the next one. So this year, we sent an advice on the, to the board on the 23th of February, and those are the three advices. There, one has to do with the PIR, ETOs, sales of the PIR sale. The second one has to do with, as a correlation, you know, it came out of that discussion within the steering committee and the chapter advisory council. Two more that has to do that, you know, ISO should consult the chapter community. And going forward, you know, we might look into what kind of governance, you know, which you look at the governance of ISOs going forward. None of this stuff has to happen and that you should follow X, Y, and Z. You know, what are its in the bylaws to do this? So it doesn't happen in the end. And at least the world consult, the community, the different communities on, on, on things like similar to the PIR sale. So in February 27, we receive a response from the board and explain the whole thing in context. On the first one, the way we read it is for the response, you know, that you met all the conditions in this list that we sent. Everyone, every of those conditions were answered. So to all effects, you know, those conditions have been met. And I will go further on that on the, in the next bullet. And the other two, basically what you have said is let's put it on hold, let's finish this, let's work on this foundation and then we can go and, and work on, you know, these two items going forward. So we also start paying to be implementing in the future or close or what have you, whatever is going to happen with those two. So on the advice in relation to the PIR sale, the, what we're doing now, we're, we're reactivating the, the chapter advisory council drafting group to revise the advice based on the information that happened after February 10. Because the advice that we sent in February 23rd was up to the information that we received or we had at February, you know, up to February 10. And then new things happened during the following days and weeks. And so we're revising the advice based on that information. And also to clarify, you know, the process that we followed and the language that we used. And I wrote a message to the chapter list explaining those two step by step, what the process there was that we follow. We basically follow the process that is in our charter, which means we send out a consensus call and we ask for objections. We did this during the, for a week period and there were no objections received during that week. We got some call people that wanted to change the consensus to a vote. Those are not, those were not objections. And we did receive an objection, but a few hours after the period was ended. So in any case, when I transmitted this to the board, we transmitted it. We use the word unanimous, which caused a lot of, of discussion in the list. And even part of the response that came back mentioned this. And I just tried to clarify that we use in the unanimous, unanimous word with respect in the context that we did not receive any objections within that context. But, you know, unanimous cannot be used for certainty. Of, you know, that everybody was in accord with what was there. And so nothing. In the end, we don't want to use that word going forward because it's not, it's not, people have it, use it in different contexts, different, different places. And people will have different ideas about what it is. So we need to clarify, you know, we don't have to make, put noise into something like this. So in any case, we're going to circle back with this addendum. We will go through the same process again. And, you know, it will be where it would be. So that's, that's what, where we are with the 2020 advice. I don't know if anybody has a question?
Yes, Eduardo. I think, thanks a lot because I think tracking, you know, the advice and what you guys are waiting for regarding, you know, responses from us or actions, I think that's great. So thanks for, for tracking these things. And, and yeah, I mean, regarding the, you know, level of consensus or whatever, I mean, as you know, this is something we've been working with the last, at least, you know, three chairs of the, of the chapter advisory committee. And I think the best way is what you and I have talked. Just be very explicit on, on, you know, what is the level of support of a proposal. And, and you know, this is nothing strange. This is for example, when in the ITF, when they have a draft, you know, a document that they want to publish. This is one of the questions that the chair of the group needs to answer. It's like, what is the level of support? So in that sense, I don't think anyone is claiming, oh, you know, there's consensus or there's no consensus because we have rules for that. It's just to be very explicit saying, look, you know, this was a particularly, I don't know, interesting discussion and we had 1,000 people involved. Or this is something particularly non-controversial and this is the, I don't know, you know, the, you know, is the result of discussions among three people. Things like that, they help because in that sense, you know, originally, when we set up the chapter advisory council, the idea is that you guys help us prioritize things. So if you send us three advice and you tell us, look, there's solid consensus between one of them. Because, you know, basically every chapter is behind. And then there's another advice where maybe, you know, it's more, you know, something maybe less mainstream or whatever, then we will prioritize accordingly. So in that sense, that's why we insist all the time. And we've been doing that for years, that, you know, just, just to know, you know, what is the level of, of support for any advice or recommendation. And as I said elsewhere, I mean, this is not specific to this advice. This is just a generic comment. So in that sense, you know, I think we are on the same page. So I don't think we need to discuss any, any longer about this.
Okay, well, I do have a question. Because how do you get a sense of participation, like you said, you know, of support or not support on this? Based on the discussion in the list?
Yeah, I mean, on, on any discussion you have. For example, when, when we have in the ITF working group, you know, some, some drafts, they are discussed by, you know, you can see it in the, on the email by, let's say, tens of people. Others is more like one guy is supporting the draft and, you know, nobody else complains. So just that bit of information, you know, that would be useful. So I'm not asking you to go one by one, asking people or anything like that. It's just like, you know, from your point of view, you usually see, you know, the level of discussion or how many people have been involved, things like that. So this is basically what, what we are looking for.
Well, I don't know how to do that, you know, that, you know, you look at the meetings that we have regularly. The, you know, sometimes we have a hard time getting just quorum. I'm talking about the full chapter advisory council. So if you look at from that perspective, you know, there, we don't, there's not much participation there. But in any case, you know, to have to give certainty to this, we have to go to a vote. But that's not what the charter says, you know, you're supposed to do a consensus first and then you do a vote.
Yeah, but Eduardo, I'm not asking you to change anything. I'm just asking you to inform us when you do that. So in that sense, if you have a meeting and you have difficulties reaching quorum, I mean, it's fair that you'd say, hey, you know, we didn't have enough people or whatever. So it's just like, what I want to have is an open communication. So, you know, so because otherwise I can't explain you what happens. I get an advice from you or whatever, and then I myself have to go to the list, check what happened, check the discussions. And this is a waste of time for, for me, for you and for everyone. Then we have to have a call maybe to understand the context. So if we get that context upfront, and I'm, I mean, and to be clear, this is nothing like, has to be seen in a negative way. As I said, the ITF does this all the time. That would be useful, basically. So, so this is not a request to change anything. It's just to basically, you know, provide us with that information usually.
Yeah, well, you know, this is like, well, we would, we will see how this goes because we go by quorum. I mean, if the, if there was advice, if they will have quorums in our meetings and we're discussing advice and the advice is there, nobody will juxtapose with, that's it. I mean, that's the only thing that we can say. There's, there was so much quorum, we reached quorum on this.
So that would be enough, you know, I mean, we had a meeting where it was quorum and nobody objected to something.
Well, then we can do this online. I mean, you know, if you feel better. So there is no doubt that the, the chapter advisory council, you know, reached consensus on X and Y. But you know, remember the quorum, the quorum in the, in the meetings is only 19.
But I think, I mean, Eduardo, I think we are talking past each other. I'm not, I'm not judging whether or not you are reaching consensus. I'm saying that within reaching consensus, there's very different cases, right? So a case could be that everyone explicitly talks in favor about something because, you know, this is so important for every chapter. That would be fair. I mean, it would be fair that the, the board actually treats that with more priority than something that maybe someone proposed and nobody objected. Both of them have consensus according to your rules and nobody's saying that they don't. What we are saying is like, within something that has consensus, it would be useful actually to understand the level of support, if that makes sense.
Well, so what does that tells you, their, their level of support?
It tells us how to prioritize the, the. Exactly. So as I said, if I get something that you say, look, every single chapter in the world is screaming for this. And you sent us this advice, I'm gonna just, you know, fast track it, prioritize it. And like we did last time, as you know this, we got back to you in only a few days. If you send me something saying, well, you know, this is important for some people, not so much for others, maybe, you know, we can treat it as business as usual. And have it, you know, handled as a normal priority. So it's all about prioritization.
Okay, well, that's a different, different direction that I got because advice to me is advice. And you, you, the board prioritizes the way you want. I just, we go through a process with, I just make sure that what we send you is something that was reached on consensus. One, two, 10, 100. Now you prioritize it the way you wanted to prioritize it. I'm just sending the advice and making sure we run our process correctly. So while you get, it's not something that I made up or.
No, no, that, you know, that's clear.
May I intervene just a little bit? Eduardo, as I, as I understand Gonzalo, and as you know, I intervened a few times on that discussion as well. And I had misunderstandings also with regard to how things were presented. So I appreciate that there sometimes we're talking past each other. But, but my, my read of this is not that Gonzalo or that any, anyone on the board is asking for you to change your procedures. So that's not what's happening. And I, and I think everyone agrees that you followed your procedures. And no one's asking for an additional procedure. So what I say, I read Gonzalo, and he can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that there's nothing about the procedural requirements that prevents you from adding more contextual information. So that if we know, you know, I think you could always, you could do the report and say, this was the formal outcome of our, of our consideration of the question. And this is the formal outcome of our advice process. But then you could also add things like, we only heard from three chapters, or we heard from every chapter, or, you know, the discussion, you know, anything you wanted to add, honestly. I don't think there's a form, there's, I don't think Gonzalo is asking for a particular formal.
No, exactly.
And just wants to understand more of the context of how the discussion went. Because a low volume discussion that leads to consensus tells us something about prioritizing. A high volume discussion that leads to consensus that involves many chapters, it obviously would have a higher priority to us. So, so that I think is a little bit of what Gonzalo was trying to get at. And I hope I've added some, some understanding to that.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So yeah, it's about the context. So it's not about judging consensus. It's just to get further context on, on any particular request. Okay. Does that make sense, Eduardo?
Understood. I get, I get it.
Yeah, so just to pile on there, the ITF process is actually called the Document Shepherd Write-up. So when an RFC gets consensus to move forward out of the working group, we put a wrapper around it, which is the write-up from the working group chairs. And one of the questions is, how strong was the consensus? You have consensus, but it was a couple of people, a couple of really loud people, everybody, the whole kind of thing. That's, that's really all it is. It's basically just a wrapper around the advice. And it can literally be in the email that you send that has the attachment. That's, that's really all we're asking for.
Okay.
Thanks.
Cool.
Thank you.
So are there any other question?
Any other question? Please, Eduardo, move on. And again, thanks a lot for tracking these things. I mean, I want to stress that this is a great job you're doing. And, you know, we, we agreed to do that a few months ago. So I went to stress the fact that, you know, you are keeping your promise. So I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I just like to chime in real briefly with some thanks to the chapters, to the advisory committee for thinking about some of these governance issues you're raising. As I think Gonzalo's message a few weeks ago pointed out, there's, there's going to be a need for a lot of consultation in the upcoming weeks, upcoming months. So I'm, I'm looking forward to engaging in that. I'm glad you guys are starting to have those conversations already.
Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe a very quick note from me, I will leave here, is that I really appreciate the time and energy you have put into this. It's very obvious it's draining sometimes. So that's something you need to consider as a positive note from the board to you.
Thank you. So come, we move to the next one. Thank you. So looking ahead, we have started a discussion on the, this thing about the opt-in and opt-out by ISO members. And how did, what effect had that has in the total number of members that we have. You know, this up, up thing is something that's kind of difficult to wrap around because you have people in your chapter that they opt out. And, but again, they are counted as members, but you cannot, you cannot talk to them about your events. You cannot engage them. So, you know, you have members that you can engage, that type of conundrum. So, and we have got a couple of emails requesting us to look into that and to see if we can come up with some ideas that we can send to the board for, for, for discussion. So we're starting, we, we, we got the information from a couple of chapters about this. I know Christine from staff has started doing some gathering about, around the MemberNova and issues that are happening there and things that the chapters need, that they need for support from that system. So that work is happening there. So I think this whole thing is going to come up in one place, but Christine is doing that, that work, which is very, very important to do. So, and also we are reviving again the changes to the charters that Richard, my previous colleague, started in 2019, a team about changing the, our charter to make it more efficient. Were you looking at the, also at the, at the, also the quorum, especially for the steering committee, which is kind of high. So I, there is an AHOG group that is already working on this. So you will see something going through, through this eventually. But, you know, changes to the charters require a specific number of quorum, like 75% of the, of the chapters have to approve that. So that's, and they have to prove it in a meeting. It doesn't have, it cannot be done electronically. So that's going to be a challenge. In any case, that's where we are. This, something that is happening. And with that in mind, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions before my time is up?
Thank you, Eduardo. This, this is useful and please keep us updated on, on the work on that. Because, yeah, I know that in the past, we've, we've talked about, you know, having rules that make sense and everything. So, you know, having a kind of, you know, a discussion on the process and everything would be, would be very welcome.
Okay.
So Kevin, if you could move into the mosaic again. Yeah, thanks. So any, any questions for Eduardo beyond the discussion we already had?
I think Andrew has his hand up.
Andrew.
I do.
Okay, Andrew, yes, go ahead.
So one thing, Eduardo, that I noticed about the opt-in, opt-out issue, some of this had to, has to do with some features, I guess I'll call it features, of MemberNova. And it's worth noting that we're, we're having a look at some of the challenges that MemberNova has presented. So that's, that's a current staff effort that's underway. And you should look for, you and other chapter leaders should look for some interaction about, about that coming up. Probably this quarter, like this coming quarter. But I'm not exactly sure when it's going to happen. But, but there is, we, we appreciate that there have been some challenges. And what we're trying to do is get a list of those things internally that are ones that, you know, like we already know what these ones are. So you don't have to tell us about it. And getting that list comprehensively, well, perhaps what I can say is that the list just turned out not to be as short as we would have liked. And so we're, we're spending some time refining it.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, with that in mind, I think I want to thank everyone in the board for inviting me to the meeting and, and give us the opportunity to give, to tell you what we have been, what we have done and what we were planning to do.
Yeah.
You know, thank you, thank you for the invitation.
Yeah, and Eduardo, as, as we usually say, I mean, there's certain things that is good to exchange formal liaisons or recommendation or advice back and forth. But for other things, we are always open to have also informal discussions or, or, you know, just to, to understand where we are. So, I mean, you and I have, you know, periodic calls every now and then. But even if you want to have a call with, you know, more people from the board or anything, or email exchanges, whatever, we are always open to have that channel open. So just for you to know that, you know, you can do that as well. If sometimes, you know, you are doubting on, you know, how to put together a formal resolution or, or there's something that doesn't, I mean, it's not worth it basically to put something formal, just to minimize the overhead. We are all open for that. So.
Okay. And remember, this is an advisory group. So, you know, we are here, if you have any questions for the chapters, just send them this way and we will try to get the answer.
And we will, we will, because as I said in my last email, is specifically about the connected giving foundation. As you know, I mean, basically the entity that would be receiving the, the money from PIR, we're going to be asking the community, which you are part of, obviously, a set of questions on how to structure that. I think your input would be extremely valuable because those, I think we answered that as part of our, our response to the last advice, that, you know, certain things we couldn't basically, you know, consult with the community because of legal constraints. But others, we are actually not completely, you know, free to do that. And, and that's our intention. We will be discussing also with, within the team, with Sandy, with Andrew, how to structure that as well. And, you know, just expect to, to hear from us regarding that very soon.
Yeah, and maybe I could chime in very quickly. Yeah, and maybe I could chime in very quickly on.
Yeah.
And there are also occasionally things that we, as a board, decide on, and we don't know the impact. For example, we've moved the voting process, shrink the voting process, and introduce the forum as a as a prerequisite, or let's say, a sequential process. I mean, we'd like also know if you have the opportunity and interest, because I was at the election committee chair last time, decided to do this, and now we are seeing the results. So that's something that you might want to raise. And of course, it's always welcome to encourage chapters to vote. This is the last time we might get this to be mentioned to you. And so hopefully, it will be a good turnout.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else before before Eduardo disconnects? Okay, okay. Thanks again, Eduardo. Take care of yourself.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Have a good day. Excellent. Okay, perfect. So so next on the agenda, it's Luis. Luis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
Hear me? Excellent.
Okay, so Luis, again, you know, I I'm really sorry, we are not there in person. We would have loved to to come back to Cancun. So hopefully, we can do that in the future and meet you there in person.
Yeah, sure. The the last time we met Gonzalo was in I T F in Singapore. So the it was a great time to meet. The we really miss you guys. The Icon has thinking of meeting in Icon Seventy. So hopefully, we can meet by that time. The so everybody is missing. I know that some people couldn't change their flight, so they are here in 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 Mexico as well. Actually, Alejandro Martinez, who is now the chair of the chapter, is now in Cancun. So I know Alejandro is here as well.
Yeah, we can see him on the video. Oh, wow. So so some people made it to Cancun anyway.
Already in Guadalajara, Luis. Ah, okay. I pulled back yesterday, last night.
Oh, you are in Guadalajara. Okay. My, my, you know, my, my family is actually from Guadalajara, but the one in Spain, you know, so. Okay, thank you, Luis. But anyway, as I said, you know, let's let's take the chance of meeting next time, whatever it is. That's always, that's always good. So, yeah, but anyway, we didn't want to cancel the the report from the local chapter. Because, you know, even though we are not in Mexico, we thought that it was nice, basically, to hear from you anyway. So so thanks a lot for joining, and we are looking forward to to your presentation. Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you for your time. I should introduce already Alejandro Martinez, who is the new chair of the chapter. And I understand Jeffrey Fernandez, who acts as the secretary and was the founder of the chapter, who is joining us as well. So we appreciate a lot the chance to talk about what what is the situation of Internet in Mexico, what we are doing from the chapter. And really thank the board to hear our thoughts about this. As you may know, Mexico chapter is one of the oldest chapters of ISOC. So we have a lot of stories to tell, but we will focus for the next ten minutes and leave some time from Q and A. So I will lead the boys, and Alejandro will join for some comments. The we we are talking about Internet at Mexico, how we have grown and how we are consolidating into bringing the the principles and values of ISOC into public policy, technical activities, and with people. Yes, we want to get close to people. So next, please. Or, yes, I don't know how, do not have the control. Okay, so we're going through four main topics. The main is, the first is who we are. The next, how we are contributing to have a stronger Internet in Mexico. The third is how we are getting more people connected to the Internet. And the fourth is what is happening now around the Internet in Mexico. So next, please. Well, as I was saying, the the sorry, I cannot see the figure. The Mexico chapter of the Internet was the second charter chapter in Latin America. The first one was Argentina, but we submitted our application nearly at the same time. Currently, we have about four hundred members. Before opting, we were about nine hundred. So we were in the in the in the mean of the effects of the opting. We have a let's say, normal composition of gender. However, we are higher than the usual numbers for the engineering or the Internet industry. We have members of all sectors, government, academia, and industry. We nearly have presence of members in every Mexican state. As you know, Mexico is quite large. Flying from Tijuana, where I'm now, to Cancun takes about five hours. So it's quite a a a long country. We have the three thousand kilometer border with the U S. So and first election was held in nineteen ninety five, when the chapter was founded. Second election happened in nineteen ninety six after the first president leave. The next president just stayed for the for the next twenty one years. We had an election twenty seventeen, I was elected chair. Twenty nineteen, we just have a new election, and Alejandro was elected. So you may see who who are members of the board now. Next, please. Oh, sorry, can you go back? Excellent. Thank you. So trying to resemble the ecosystem figure of of the Internet. The these are the organizations and the sectors we are related to, where we have participation, where we usually held meetings, or we have presence in their bodies, yes. Ranging from the government, going through universities, groups, and individuals. The operators, telecom operators, including Facebook and Google. The MexNOG, which is newly created, the regulator, which who is the I F T. And obviously, the NIC as the Names and Numbers Authority in this country. Now, next, please. Nearly excellent. Okay. Sorry, according to official figures, sorry about the Spanish in the slides, but the where in Mexico, there is about eighty million of people connected to the Internet, which is about seventy percent of population. Currently, official numbers is about one hundred and twenty millions in Mexico. On the left, in the middle, we see the group ages, the age groups of the users. Yes, we see that the growth of people connected to the Internet is young, ranging from eighteen to thirty four years old. So that means we have to focus a lot on young people, young people. I don't like to call them millennials, but they tend to be quite tempestive. So we need to bring not order, but reflection, time to think about what they are saying and using. On the right, we see that we have a big problem because the as most of the urban population is connected to the Internet, seventy six percent, current figures. In the rural or in in just outside the big cities, things are not getting nearly half. Our current expectations is that seven percent of Mexican land will never be connected to the Internet. We have deserts and lots of lots of high mountains. But three percent of people living there are condemned to not be connected to the Internet. That's where we play a fundamental role, supporting the community networks and then connect it either to operators or to the Mexican facilities, infrastructure, through a large shared backbone, fiber optic bone. The favorite media to connect to the Internet is now the mobile phone, followed by the computer, portable computer, the less television. Next, please.
Just a a quick note about the the connections in within Mexico. Let's remember also that the rural areas do not have, even though they are, they are a large percentage of of connectivity. But the quality of the connection, it's not, it's it's a it's a it's worse than the than the metropolitan areas you can get. Usually, a lot of the the statistics on connectivity within the rural areas are based on connections being shared through public places and 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 then and not the 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 same level of connectivity that 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 people have in the in the metropolitan areas. So a lot of that might be, might even be considered that roughly a connection to the Internet. They they are not using the regular applications or services that are available to the to the to a better quality in the in the connection.
Can I intervene quickly and ask, if it's possible, about this point?
Yeah, sure.
Also taking into account data, mobile data, connections, and all sorts of other connections. I mean, is it a personal personally identifiable data or broadly about cable lines, for example, broadband or to home connections?
Well, the this is a bulk statistic. We're talking that the actually broadband through mobile lines is has more penetration now than landlines. Yes, if we're talking about fiber cable reaching homes. It's less than the availability of broadband through four G connections and still a lot of three G connections. And in rural areas, Alejandro says, there is still two G connections. So the we are on the line for five G, but the that will only reach large cities. Urban are condemned to not have five G in the in the near future. And they will depend on three G and four G to connect to the Internet. Is that what you were asking for?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. So, okay, so what are we doing to strengthen the Internet in Mexico? We have a good relationship with the regulator, the government and policymakers. We have saying the the our thoughts, principles, and values as part of ISOC to the Mexican government and to I F T, which is the regulator, the equivalent to Ofcom, the E B U or the F C C. Yes. We are building a lot of capacity through community networks. The large community networks in this country have resulted from beyond the net support. The largest is the project of Telecomunicaciones Comunitarias, who are acting in Oaxaca and Chiapas and Jalisco states, which is a lot of indigenous people living there. We are providing a lot of support through education and training that happens as well as in the organization of MexNOG or cyber cybersecurity courses in Oaxaca, poor areas. So we are looking forward to build wider and specialized community, talking about Internet from a number of educated point of view of the of the Internet. And we feel we are contributing a lot to gap reduction, seen as the access divide. But we also think about the cultural divide. We there there are about one thousand five hundred languages spoken in Mexico. And each one has a complexity on using the Internet in their own character set. So we're we're working on that. We have seen young people are developing wonderful things for chatting in their languages, just adapting the numbers. They are nearly speaking in emojis. Next, please. Okay, the I will focus on the community networks and how the Internet has grown in Mexico. I was telling you, we have a number of partners, yes, who share our views and things about how the Internet is going to grow. We have this model that the problem is not connecting the next billion, is to connect the last billion. The last billion of people on earth that would be very hard to connect. So we think that community networks and WISP or wireless Internet service providers that run rans to connect to small villages are going to be essential for connecting this last billion. We are through the chapter, we are providing support, technical support to make installation as the one on the left. We are providing support to create contents and to raise the the abilities, digital abilities for everybody, for people in 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 the field. And the bringing education and courses, free courses to children in school, in rural schools. And some guys in Cancun, who you were able to meet next time we meet in Cancun, are even developing hardware to provide schools to to cache version of the Internet for schools with very poor connectivity in the rural areas, as Alejandro was saying. So we thank the Internet Society Foundation for supporting these projects. Next, please. Finally, we are in a moment that we are talking about policy, we are talking about the our role in the technical standardization, on the technical support to people. We are also providing support as our opinion, our technique, technical opinion regarding the last three movements we have seen. The first one is Internet para todos, which copied the lema of ISOC, Internet for Everyone, which is the backbone fiber optics I was talking about the the government. We provided a lot of input how this should work, even me as member of the Advisory Council for the regulator. I made the recommendation for how a small service providers local should use the backbone. So we we did that job on the recent call for public opinion regarding the net neutrality. A group of people organized in this campaign called Salvemos Internet, Let's Save the Internet. We gave our technical opinion based a lot on the white paper issue by ISOC. And we told them we have to separate the problem, the technical on one side and the human rights on the other side. It may be the same, but it has different approaches. Last week, we have gender demonstrations for women. That little violet points on the figure are women, yes, gathering. And the we're happy to see that the Internet is used for organizing these demonstrations. There were live broadcasting and a lot is archived on the Internet. So the we feel that our members are very active on this, and we just keep saying, do not go into censure. Let's you, let's use the Internet to build a better community and a better world. So the I'm very happy to hear your comments and your answers, questions if you have any sometime.
Thank you, Luis. This is really good and interesting presentation, actually. I mean, understanding how the whole coverage of the of the country is going, how it's progressing, and, you know, year by year. So I I really enjoyed those those data. And and also, I mean, interesting about the characters and and the need to to develop, basically, a a a new set of character sets for for communicating. I never thought of that, actually. I mean, like, like, of course, I mean, everybody knows that there's a certain character sets, but to the scale that you talk about, so many languages, that's actually surprising. So.
Yeah, I have seen that with the indigenous people in Chiapas, who use a lot of accents and tilde on the on the letters. They have developed new ways to communicate in a faster way, using the WhatsApp, yes, which is running fine on their slow networks. yes, which is running fine on their slow networks. And they get a lot of support from Mozilla Foundation to develop a version of Firefox that runs fine on their characters.
Oh, nice. Wow, really, really amazing, actually. Well, thanks for all the information, Luis. I have a few, a few questions here. Olga, please.
Hola Luis, hola Jeffrey, hola Alejandro. Bienvenidos, welcome. I really want to commend you for your great work. As you said, Mexico chapter is one of our reference in the region. Of course, after Argentina, but that's a, that's a slight, that's a slight, that's a slight detail. No, it's honestly, I really commend you for, for all the work that you do. And I have a question. Mexico is a quite big country like, like mine. And I see that you, you really are successful in, in including people in your board and your activities from all parts of Mexico. By the way, you're not based in Mexico City, as far as I can remember. You're based in Guadalajara, right?
Well, Alejandro is in Guadalajara.
Alejandro is in Guadalajara and you're in New Orleans.
No, Jeffrey is in Puerto Vallarta in the Pacific. And I'm now doing a project in Tijuana. So the, we are thousands of kilometers away.
I know. So that, that is something that I find remarkable. And based on the experience in other countries in Latin America, that we have especially big countries, but with highly concentrated populations in some cities. So having people actively participating from different parts of the country is, is very good. And I see your success with that. I would like you to share with us how, how you managed that, how you managed to be so good with that.
Well, the internet is really very useful. Doing these conferences is something normal for us. But we also see the problems with the distance. We were for some time thinking in to asking ISO to have another chapter that at least split the country in half. Sometimes we have to do board meetings and then I have to fly to Guadalajara or Alejandro fly to Mexico City when I am based in Mexico City. But the, we lack completely on electronic communications to organize what we are doing. The administration of the chapter is distributed between Guadalajara and Mexico and using electronic banking. When we need to provide resources for activities, we just do it electronically. We use a lot of FedEx and DHL to send materials. And the, that's run on a, on a remote operation situation. I would like to point out also that, that you asked, Olga, you asked us how we manage or how we do it. Well, let's remember that the, that the Mexico chapter of ISO was founded in Guadalajara.
Oh, I didn't remember that.
With this capacity or this will of involving people from outside Mexico City. So, so, and that is how the internet was born in Mexico as well. Before the internet, the Mexican internet chapter, a group of universities gather up and started the first Mexican internet backbone, which, which was Mexnet. And this was all done by, well, Jeffrey started also that, that project, the, the one with the, getting together with the university and, and forming our first Mexican backbone. It was a 64 kilo bits per second backbone, for those of you that remember that era. And, 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 and again, it was, it was cities like Puebla, Monterrey, Guadalajara, which were more involved in setting up these backbones. So from the early beginning, we, we've been seeing this as a, as a, as a need to, to, you know, get the country together and, and start building projects where, that would impact society. That was our vision back then. I just to complement a very fast comment. The, the reason I'm here is that sometimes the, you cannot do everything remote. I came here to implement a radio station and a community network project. And that's why I need to be here for some time. Because we believe a lot that engineering, sometimes in the very adverse conditions, require the engineer to be there. Thanks.
Thank you.
And try, try and keep yourself safe, Luis. That's, that's the most important part.
Yeah.
So you can continue your good work. I have yet another question. Walid.
Yes, again, congratulations on the great work you're doing. As you know, I mean, we have the Internet Society, both developmental aspect as well as a policy aspect. And one of the recent things that came up in Mexico is the IFT guidelines, proposed draft, that has been said to be detrimental to, you know, freedom of expression online as well as potentially leading to privacy concerns. There's been a massive on, online campaign, I think it's called Salvemos Internet. So is that something that you're working on? Is, are you part of this? Are you engaging with the community and finding ways to help? And what is it that ISO can do?
Okay, Salam Walid. The, the, we, as I was explaining, the campaign was started by a number of NGO organizations that, when they read the guidelines regarding the net neutrality, they were claiming that they were, their human rights were going to be affected. Now, as a chapter, we have participated in a number, in a number of public processes regarding the net neutrality. And we provided input to the IFT, the regulator, about the the broad term of neutrality. And we have to separate what we understand of net neutrality and what is related to network management. Now, the network management is a necessary technical issue and is required for the efficiency of the network. The, these groups were claiming that we as a chapter participate actively in, on their campaign. But we noticed that the campaign has also a political presence. So we decided to support, support people from these organizations with technical information, with technical advice, and rather stay away from the political discussion, which is not our main objective. So we, as I was explaining, the white paper of ISO regarding the net neutrality is included in the guidelines, yes, is included in the, in the law, in the interpretation of IFT regarding regulation. We had a number of meetings with IFT, which were not public, but we had these meetings. And the, the issue or the main issue is that these groups, they even want to change the definition of net neutrality, which is by far universal. Yes. So then the, what I foresee is that we will continue to support what is acceptable from the point of view and just to stay away from the political discussion, which is not really our main concern.
Thank you, Luis. So we are running out of time, but this presentation was indeed very interesting. As I said, I enjoyed a lot all the statistics and the figures and, you know, the, the good work you're doing. So, so I, I thought it was really great to have you, even if it's virtually and unfortunately not face to face. Thanks also Alejandro and Jeffrey for, you know, supporting. That was also very useful. And hopefully, we will all be able to meet you guys in the, in the future at some point.
We look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye.
Usually, we can also spend some social time, like a lunch or anything. This time it's not possible, but well, it is, it is what it is. So moving on to point number five on the agenda, which is the new rejuvenated chapters. So basically, we are very happy to welcome, you know, one new chapter and two rejuvenated chapters. And Kevin will put the resolution up there. That's number five on the agenda there. So the new chapter is the Ethiopia chapter and the two rejuvenated chapters are Belgium and Cameroon. So everybody has a few seconds to read the resolution. It mentions those three chapters and I'm gonna need someone to move. And, okay, Walid moves, hands, Peter, seconds. And we're gonna pass this by acclamation. Okay, so it is always great to see, you know, new chapters basically joining and chapters basically, you know, rejuvenating. So I'm, I'm very happy about this. This is, this is really great news indeed. So the, for our note taker, John, the resolution passes by acclamation. Moving on to point number six on the agenda, which is to make two appointments to the PIR board. So as, as, as you know, usually we have the PIR non-com process, whereby we appoint basically people to the PIR board every year. Since this year, we are involved in the PIR deal. We thought, eh, we, we would basically, I mean, running the, running the process would be a bit strange. And since the process has been basically, you know, taking a bit longer than originally expected, we decided to basically appoint or extend the terms of the two trustees or the two directors in the PIR board, that they were basically, you know, finishing their terms in, in one year. So, you know, Jeff and Orel, the resolution will basically appoint them on one, one more year. And the same thing here, I need someone to move. The thing is like, you know, if we can move into the mosaic mode again, so that I can see. Yeah, perfect. So, okay, so now I see you. So Olga moves and Pepper, seconds. Okay, and I'm gonna, we're gonna do this by show of hands. So I'm gonna be asking yes, no and abstain. So everybody voting yes, please raise your hands. Everybody, everybody voting no. Any abstentions? Okay, so all the trustees we have in the call voted yes. So the resolution passes.
It wasn't Glenn, did you vote yes or did you abstain? You're muted.
My hand was up.
Okay.
For yes, yes.
All right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good point. So Glenn, usually you recuse yourself from PIR related decisions. So maybe you want to abstain on this?
Yeah, yeah, I better, I better change that to abstain. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for noticing, John. Okay, so 10, 10 yes, one abstention and Mika is not with us. And perfect, so the resolution passes. Moving on to point number seven on the agenda, which is to, to, for the board and the community to get a report on the ISO non-com. And we got a couple of questions before. This is an open session, so, so there's nothing confidential in the report. So Olga, please, the, the floor is yours. We will, we will basically hear the presentation and then pass our resolution to accept the report afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Gonzalo. I made a report and I don't know if Kevin, you can show it or I just can read it from my computer. It's only information, so it's not a PowerPoint. Okay, thank you very much. So first point in the, in the report is the timetable. As you can see, I won't read it because it's very long. But as you can see, we did a slight change in the date that we published the candidate slate. And we announced the candidate slate. It was delayed by one week approximately because we wanted some more information about some candidates in the list. Only that, that, that's the only main change in the timetable. And about the applications that we received, I would like to make some comments because as I have been chairing this non-com before, I'm a member of this non-com before. And we have seen some important changes. We had a total applications of 30, 30 applications received, which is, which is not the biggest number that I can recall. We had 36, I think, the year before or the previous year. But there are other details that I want to share with you about this. 13 from chapters and 17 from organizations. The, the good things that we noticed is the regional distribution of the, of the applications. About chapters, we had three from Africa, five from Asia-Pacific, one from Europe, two from Latin America and the Caribbean, and two from North America. And you may recall from previous non-coms, we had very few or none applications from Asia-Pacific. So I would like to stress this point as a result of the good work of the chapters and of the staff that it's really focusing work in, in areas, in regions that were perhaps not more, not so much aware of our work and this elections and this possibility of appointing members. About organizations, we see some, still some, some lack of some regions, but that's, that's quite normal and that's usual. Three from Africa, three from Asia-Pacific, four from Europe, none from Latin America and the Caribbean, and seven from North America. But still, I think it's remarkable having better regional distribution of the applications in general and more from Asia-Pacific. About gender, that is, that was somehow disappointing, having no female candidates from chapters. We, we did manage to include one, one female candidate in the chapter slate. I will go into details in a moment about that. But there were no female candidates, which was somehow disappointing, but it's what it is. And Kevin, can you scroll it a little bit up? Thank you very much. Organizations, six female and 11 male. So what we, after doing a selection and deliberations and reports and interviews, we selected a slate of six candidates. I will focus first on the chapter slate. We selected six candidates for the chapter's election. It was difficult. All the candidates were very good. And we privilege the regional distribution and the regional representation of all of them, which we thought it was very good. I would like to commend and, and thank our non-com committee members that were very, very, we, we had a very good teamwork. And after this sixth candidate slate was informed to the community, there was a petition by, made by George Sadowski, you may have seen it. And it received a lot of support from several chapters. So therefore, the, there are two seats that will be, will be filled by those who win this election. And the finance slate is, as you can see in the, in the, in the screen, it's organized by last name alphabetical order. Satish Babu from India, Mayuna Diop from Senegal, she's a lady. She was originally in the, in the organization as an organization candidate. But after we had the interview with her, we realized that she was, she had more experience in, in working with chapters than organizations. So we thought that she could be a good addition to the slate. Liz Miguel from Mexico, we just had him in, in this meeting. Glenn McNife from Canada, Glenn is, is already a member of our board. Me Quayong from Pakistan, George Sadowski from the United States and Roberto Sambrana from Bolivia. And then about the organizations' election, thank you, Kevin. So we, originally, we selected a slate of two candidates for the organization member selection. There was one more candidate that was added to the initial slate. She was originally identified as a very good candidate, but there, there was some conflict of interest that we had to review. So this is why we delayed a little bit the announcement. But finally, we, we organized this slate of three candidates. We could select this slate of three candidates, Olivia Le from France, that hardly from the United States and Heather West from the United States. And all the information you can find of them there, I think they are online in this, in this link. I don't know if we have more information because this is a shorter, that's all. Okay, so that's, that's a report for, for all of you. If you have questions, and again, thank you for all the candidates that, that were willing to run for this election. And many, many thanks to the members of the committee, Sean. And we don't have here Glenn Dean from, from the organizations and also the And we don't have here Glenn Dean from, from the organizations and also the appointed by the chapters, Mr. Calderon from Puerto Rico, and Mika was also in the group.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Olga. Yeah, it's good to see that, I mean, to say that, you know, after discussing with the OMAC and the chapter advisory committee, we decided basically to let them appoint a member to the, or suggest a member, which we confirmed to the advisory committees. And I think that has worked very well, so that's really good.
Yeah, both of them, Alfredo Calderon and Glenn Dean, really were very, very helpful. And also, I know Sean is nodding because he, he was also great. It was a teamwork. It was, it was very good that the committee was not so big. It was quite concentrated, but they had the view from the chapters, from the organizations, and we from the board. So I think it was okay. I don't know if Sean wants to add something to my comments as a member of the noncom.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so, so this is great. Any, any questions for Olga? I think, I mean, I second basically that, that, you know, it's important to have many volunteers to be able to put together a good slate and then to have basically good selections for, for, you know, the board eventually. So yeah, that's a really important process. Okay, I don't see any questions. And last chance? Okay, good. So thank you, Olga. We need to accept the report. So I need someone to move. Richard moves. Someone to second as well? Okay, while it's seconds. Okay, perfect. We're gonna pass this again by show of hands. So I will be asking yes, no, and abstain. So everybody voting yes, please raise your hand. No votes? Abstentions? Okay, so everybody, everybody voted yes. So the resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, so let me check where we are.
I think we had unanimous consensus on that.
Exactly, yeah. I, I mean, we basically are missing one trustee because Mika couldn't make it. So in that sense, you know, I don't know if you call that unanimous or not.
No, unanimous consensus. We followed our process. We followed our process.
Exactly. So we have 11, 11 votes in favor. Let's keep it at that. Let's leave it at that. Okay, so we, next thing is a break. So we're gonna break for 15 minutes until, until, you know, 15 to the hour, where we will basically resume and listen to the president and CEO report. Okay, any, any last comment or question before we break? Okay, so enjoy your 15-minute break. Talk to you soon. Bye. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. So welcome back. We had a small break here and we continue. We are on point number eight on the agenda, which is to, the idea is to get the reports from Andrew. And Andrew will be giving us the first report, and then Renalia has joined to give us two more reports. And we have one and a half hours for that. So Andrew, the floor is yours. Okay, so the, I'm muting doesn't seem to work for some people. Andrew, can you? No. Okay, Kevin, so could you please unmute Andrew?
There we go.
Okay, perfect.
Done. And I guess you can hear me. Yes. Okay, so we should put up, this first report is the achievements report. There is a deck to go with this, I guess. You will remember that when we presented the 2019 action plan, one of the things that I talked about was how, you know, how you were gonna know whether we did this, whether, whether we did the things we said we were gonna do. That's what this report is about. And the, the point, this is, we're not all the way there in 2019. We're getting better at this. So the 2020 action plan summary will, will be an improvement over this. But this is the first year where we had things that I think were, were, you know, pretty measurable. And we've got a report that will go out to the community that matches, matches this. So next slide, please. You'll remember that in the 2019 action plan, we had sort of two pieces that we were doing. One was areas of focus. So we tried to, tried to pay attention to the, the areas of focus. And then we also tried to talk about the, the overall way in which we were going to do these things. So we had these focus areas of connecting the world, and that involved the Community Network Campaign, the Internet Exchange Points and Interconnection work, including the grant from Facebook. We had Improving Technical Security, which involved the Manners Campaign primarily. And we had efforts around building trust, which involved the Internet of Things stuff. Could you go back, please? Thank you. We also had a number of these approaches, which involved, you know, supporting the internet governance community. We had branded online presence efforts in order to try to improve the voice that we, and the way we could project that. And we had an effort to build the community through what we call was sort of a service bureau. It was really an effort to, to package together the things that we, we do that are services to chapters to make sure that they were sort of widely accessible. Next slide, please. So we had various impact indicators, and I have to say thanks to Renalia and her team. They worked to, to sort of distill this out of the, out of the action plan from 2019. And so we had a number of these things. The staff all across the organization worked hard to make sure that we, that we had these measurable things. You will see in this, and I foreshadowed this at our last meeting, that, you know, a number of these things really needed a baseline, and that was one of the problems that, that we'll, we'll see sort of repeatedly through this. You know, if you hadn't done measurements in the past, it's not always clear that you, that you have the proper baseline necessary. Nevertheless, we see some really good results here. For instance, we said that we were gonna have four governments, or at least four governments were going to express a willingness to use public funds for community networks. Actually, we got eight who were willing to do this. So this was, you know, 200% of our goal. This maybe means that we didn't set our sights high enough, but that's okay. That's how you get going. So I'm, I'm very happy about this. Similarly, we had development agencies that were pledging to make a community networks part of funding portfolios. And we got a big win here. Six of the development agents, we managed to get six development agencies, including international development banks, who are willing to sign up for this. So this is really good news because what we see is that we're, we're creating a movement around this. And I think that this is a, you know, it's very, very significant. Like the, the ITU and the GSMA are both involved. And these are, you know, these are groups that historically have been completely opposed to this, to this style of stuff. And suddenly they realize, oh, you know, this is, this is a way forward, and it really continues to grow the market. So this is, I think that this is not qualified success, and we're continuing with this work this year. Next slide, please. We also had, you know, work on, on IXP. So we were working on IXP's outside of the, the rest of the world is excluding Africa, basically, because that was where we were working on, with, with Facebook. So we distinguished between these two things. We actually managed to get 12 IXP's supported in various places. A critical thing that's, and a really important part of the way that Internet Exchange Points are useful is not just like, oh, you get an Internet Exchange Point, because that would be, that would actually be contrary to our interests, right? What would happen is you sort of drop the thing in place and then walk away. And what you get is, is infrastructure that people can operate. The real key here is actually to get a community working around this. And that's fundamentally a big part of what we're trying to work on here. You need, you need well-trained local experts running in the country. You know, we had, we acclaimed the welcoming of the Ethiopia chapter. And when I was in Ethiopia recently, I was talking to Dawid, and he was talking about how the chapter, you know, now has this opportunity to work on, on the infrastructure. And it was, you know, sort of simple kinds of infrastructure, sorts of things like, you know, all the packet loss you get in a hotel network or something like that. And it was interesting because then I went to the airport and I signed on, and I had 30% packet loss just on the first hop. And that's exactly the sort of thing where, you know, you know, you've got local experts, you really could solve this, this thing. This is not a big development piece of work that needs to happen, but you need local people who are really working on those things. Next, please. Similarly, we were doing this in, in Africa. There were two things that we were trying to do here. We were trying to scale up to 10 IXP's in Africa. There were five that we were working on. So we did get to 10. There was a second thing that we were aiming at here. There was this sort of aspirational goal of keeping 80% of the traffic inside Africa. We've got some positive, we've got some positive moves there. As you can see, the data from Nigeria and Kenya suggests that we've got like 70% local traffic. So there's, there's positive moves, but we didn't get to the 80%. Also, we didn't have really good baseline stuff here. I will say that 2020, one of the pieces that we're working on there around measurement and so on, you remember that we have a project around measuring the internet. One of the things we're really working on are these kinds of metrics, so that we've got long-term, sustainable measurement of this sort of thing. So when we go to talk to governments, or we go to talk to policymakers, we go to talk to private enterprise, we can say, hey, look, these are real things that are going on, and that's, that's a general problem with the internet these days. Next, please. So we got good news, I think, in manners, generally speaking. You know, I have heard from, on various occasions, honestly, when I started, there were some people who said to me, ah, manners isn't it over? And instead, I, you know, I felt, no, this is really the internet way. We really need to double down on this. And we have actually had quite good luck on this. Look at that, by the end of 2019, we had 311 manners members, so people were signing up. People are joining this movement, and I think that, you know, it's a community-driven movement. We're sort of, you know, facilitating this, but really it's being operated by the, by the community. Now, we, we have to say, one of the things that we were hoping to do was to say, you know, our theory was, if you get manners going, then what we should see is a number of, is a decline in the number of routing leads. In theory, right, that's, that's what ought to happen. What we actually saw instead was an increase of routing incidents. Now, the question that we have to ask is, is this because we're measuring better, because we've got more members? And, and the answer is, we don't know. And, and this is actually part of, part of the facts that we need to admit about our efforts historically. We have not really had good data to start with, and so we don't always have good things to report on. But what that means is that we need to get better at this. But we also need to understand the relationship between managed membership and the number of incidents. Because what we shouldn't have seen, if we've got more members, is we shouldn't have seen an increase, but we don't, we don't actually have an explanation for why we have that increase. The other thing that I will note, though, is that we do now have the observatory, which was, of course, sort of the critical piece of this. So since we've got that thing deployed and it's getting better, we've, we've got positive movement in any case. Next, please. So we did work on, on IOT, and we had some good results on the Internet of Things areas. We've had good results with various countries who have developed processes around this. We had, you know, good results in Canada. We had good results. We just had a good result from France. We've had good results in other countries, and people coming along with this sort of thing saying, oh, yeah, 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 we shouldn't just try to regulate in a top-down manner. So all of that is good news. But the thing we really wanted was for people to adopt the OTA framework. And we had this idea that we were gonna have five manufacturers representing 10% of the consumer market. And we really didn't have the ability to do this. I must say, as an organization, this was not really a capability that I think we had. And I think we concluded partway through the year that we were deluding ourselves in being able to do this. So this is a management error. I take a responsibility for it, that we set this goal for ourselves. And, and I don't think that it was a realistic goal. And I think what we needed to do was look at that much harder. And that's one of the things that you've seen over the past year, that we've had a look at some of these kinds of programs. And we've said, hey, we actually don't have the ability to do this, so we shouldn't do it. What that has meant, however, is that we also did some damage to our, to our relationship with other people because, you know, we canceled this project partway through the year, and people had sort of, you know, depended on it. And we didn't have the ability to change the portfolio sort of as gradually as we might have liked. That is part of the reason that I want multiple year, you know, I want the sort of five-year picture to give us the basis on which we can make these sort of longer-term judgments rather than simply going from year to year. So this, this was, I, somebody had some static there. This, this was not as successful as I would have liked, but I don't think that it's a staff problem. This really is something that was on me. All right, next, please. So. Excuse me, I tried not to cough. There we go. Exactly. I don't have coronavirus. So we did get some, some positive results in collaborative approach efforts, including in the IOT, in the IOT space. Well, we had a number of multi-stakeholder approaches rather than sort of straightforward, you know, kind of traditional regulatory stance. I, for instance, participated in, in the multi-stakeholder process around this in Canada, because it was easy for me to get there. And, you know, we had a number of serious successes there. It was very, very interesting, and I think this is, this is true across the other efforts where I've been in the room as well, that the government officials are not used to dealing this way. But they see the benefits, and when they, when they start to understand how to work on this and so on, they, they want to do it. And so I think that this is an area where we really did have some, some success. We had 15 governments really working this way. And I think that, you know, we can, we can say, this is a way forward. And, you know, once you start seeing the benefits of this, it's a natural tool that governments can start to use. So that was also, I think, pretty successful. Next, please. So in 2019, one of the things that happened was we finally had the chapter letters sort of really nailed down. And we had this idea of a health ranking of chapters. And, you know, it's really quite good, I think. We had 124 chapters by the end of this that were in good standing. So it's 94% of our chapters were, were in good standing. We had some that were rejuvenation, but we just had, you know, the applause in the earlier session today because we had two that came out of rejuvenation and are in better, in better shape. So, so this is really quite good. We still got some work to do on effective governance. We've got some chapters that are quite good with, you know, we heard this excellent report, for instance, from the Mexico chapter. And so we're trying to improve, you know, some of the other chapters. There is another issue that I wanna, I wanna say. And that is, we, we spend a lot of our efforts on the chapters who need to move up, you know, into, into good. And I think that, you know, it's sort of an open question whether we also need to spend some more time on the chapters who are really, really good, and whether we need to spend some time on them, or maybe they want to be left alone because they're doing their work. And I think that's another thing that we want to, we want to engage with this year. We really don't, didn't have effective baseline, so we're gonna be establishing that this year. We really don't didn't have effective baseline, so we're going to be establishing that this year. There is one thing that that's worth knowing, and that is the the requirement to have a local bank account in the name of the chapter. I understand why we have this rule. I think it's a good rule. I think that there are good, solid, you know, governance reasons to do this. And I think that from the point of view of our of our accountability to the IRS as well as to the wider community, this is really important. But it is a serious burden for a lot of chapters. And I think that we need to we need to face that and be honest with them that we recognize that this is difficult. There are some countries where this is all but impossible. And it really makes it very difficult for us to send them funds, for instance, for the administration and so on. It creates it creates a burden on them and I think we need to we need to acknowledge that. We did de-charter six chapters because their rejuvenation was not successful and that happened in twenty nineteen. And of course, what that means is if you say, look, this one is just not working out, your overall rate of health goes up because you you lose some people. But I think that it's it's reasonable for us to say, this is an effort that is not working. And we have to sometimes say, people have lost interest there. We're not going to continue. Next, please. We did have a positive results in the page views. It was, you know, we were aiming at three million page views and it was just over three million, three and a half million, really. So it was a little bit of an increase. It is worth noting that we got a lot more traffic at the end of twenty nineteen. And you might, you know, have an idea about why that happened. So it was a little bit, it was a little bit higher than average. And I think that that's, you know, it it suggests to us both that we've got an opportunity that results from some of the attention that we've had, but also not all not all of the attention obviously has been has been desired desired attention. Next, please. There was this question, we were gonna, we were aiming to increase the brand health. And fundamentally, we came to the conclusion that, like, whereas we had useful, you know, definition here, we wanted an increase. And the plain fact of the matter was, we didn't understand what this measurement was. And so, you know, I can't report a positive results or negative results or really any results here. But, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about about communications plans later in the meeting. More importantly, we do have a definition of this, the paid, earned, shared and owned media framework has been adopted. So we're working through this, but this is not an area where I can say we had clear impacts in twenty nineteen. Next, please. We did some other work here that I think were really, really important. We did this overall evaluation of fellowship programs. I've talked about this at length in the past, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor it, but, you know, that's ready for community consultation. It's going to be happening this year. I believe that was the right decision that we ended certain kinds of travel stipends because we didn't think they were particularly useful. We've also done some measurement of the policy guests at the IETF. That really continues to be a fairly successful program. Obviously, with the cancellation of the IETF meeting this year or this this March, we're not running that program there because it would be effectively impossible to do it virtually. But, you know, we expect to continue that that plan. Next, please. So that covers all of the all of the impacts that we, you know, that we measured in twenty nineteen. You know, I again, I thank the staff for putting putting these numbers together and for for delivering. I think it's it's really important that the internet society consistently be able to show, this is what we said we were going to do and here's how you know whether we did it or did not. One of the criticisms that has been leveled against us is that it's not always clear what what it is we're doing with the spending that we undertake. I don't think that that's entirely fair, but I think that, you know, the fact that we have not always been as transparent as perhaps we should have been is something that I think we need to continue to get better at and this is a piece of that. There is a report that will go with this and Rinalia is going to talk about that, so I'll hand it over to her. Oh, unless there are questions.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Yeah, I see Sean has a question.
So thanks for this, Andrew. It's great to see that we're we also get this information through the GRO dashboard. Yes, is the idea that maybe if we wanted to provide more transparency, we could provide that to the community to be able to watch? Or is the fine grain, would you want to do it differently?
I think it's fair to say that not all of the staff agree with my position on this. But I would like the long term story to be, yes, that is, that becomes a public mechanism in which, you know, people have real time ability to look at what we're doing and how we're doing it. Because I think the staff are doing great things and I think we should be screaming about it from the from the job.
Especially if it's public, because then you can just point to it. Because I find a lot of people like, Ali didn't do anything. And I'm like, didn't she know about blah? People are like, where'd it come from? I'm like, well, from the reports they write and from the other things that they that the community does, you're just not particularly plugged into those. If you've got a link you can send, like, hey, check this out, it helps.
I do think that that is part of the long term story. I I don't know that I would want to point everybody in the world at growth in the condition it's in right now. So I think that maybe like this year, that is not, that's not what the plan is. But I do believe that in the long run, that that is precisely where we ought to be going.
Okay, thank you.
I can see Rinalia like practically wants to come through the wires and strangle me.
We can we can see that. It's good that we have a virtual meeting.
So unrehearsed, by the way.
Face to face meetings can get quite dangerous nowadays.
That's right.
Mike.
So so I guess what I've learned is that now we should have a PIR controversy every year to continue to build on our engagement with with our web resources. But but more seriously, no, really, I'm totally serious. We just keep selling it every year. And it was, we seem to be on the path to continue to sell it year by year. So so given that that's happening, you know, that's an option. But I think that one thing that I noted at the IGF right after we announced the PIR transaction was that Brett Solomon, when he was holding his side meeting at IGF for the purpose of beating the drum against the transactions, would say, we realized we have not been paying adequate attention to the quality of contributions that ISOC has been making in terms of its excellent stewardship of of PIR, its responsibilities with regard to PIR and the dot org T O B. And I found that was really interesting. So in a sense, I'm a little more serious that that, you know, we did benefit from the fact that we got the attention, even though a lot of it was negative attention. And so my feeling is, and maybe Rinalia will shoot me down on this, but my feeling is that the, you know, the more interactive our updated resources about what we're doing are, the more people will engage with us on the website and through other channels. So so I'm I'm I tend to be to come down with you on that, on the dashboard stuff.
I do think, though, that we need to acknowledge that historically the action plans were perhaps not as specific about what they were going to achieve as 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 the ones over the past couple of years have been. And I and I will say, you know, I've challenged the staff to to commit publicly to quite specific and concrete measures and they've come through on that. And that, you know, that's a scary thing to ask people to do. You know, you're going to commit to this thing and then we're going to hold you up every year and say, look, this is what we did. And that's, you know, that is, I think, a place where the staff have have really, you know, stuck their necks out. And I think that that we need to acknowledge that because that's that's giving us this ability to to deliver reports like this from year to year. So I, you know, I believe that the Internet Society staff really, you know, we owe them a debt of gratitude for being willing to undertake this because most people don't have this kind of challenge, right? Where you're gonna you're going to be judged in public all the time about whether you whether you really did good work. So I think that that's a that's a good thing, but I believe that that is part of our responsibility. You know, if we're going to be the internet society, then we need to mean it. And that means when we work on on the things we do, we have to say, this is what we're doing with all of this money that we fortunately have.
Okay, Waleed. Assuming you can unmute yourself, maybe that's not trivia. No, okay. We should really look into this because, okay, Waleed, now you're unmuted.
Thanks, Kevin. I got scared a bit. Okay, so just one thing about the accomplishments in terms of the extended, let's say, scope of ISOP, which is the chapters, do you also take that into account? For example, the projects, whether the medium, large size projects and whether they have been implemented. I recall some time ago that we also wanted to see if there's an impact on the ground in these particular regions. I mean, have you had any form of metrics that you can use to measure?
So we didn't have anything like that for twenty nineteen. It was one of the things that we wanted to do, but the twenty nineteen action plan didn't include measures along those lines. The twenty twenty plan does. And so we're going to see, you know, how effective we are at that. I think in twenty twenty, we were perhaps less good at getting the, just so far, we were less good at getting that engagement and involvement than we would like to be over the long run. You know, but that will take time when you want, you know, we've got a large number of chapters and we've got different sort of levels of engagements and so on. And of course, not all of the chapters are interested in all of the things we're doing. So sometimes it's hard to hard to get people interested in it. But I believe that as we refine this thing, and Rinalia is going to talk a little bit about our plans for engaging the community on our building of the twenty twenty one plan. So, you know, that's another piece of this, that we sort of tell people in advance and give them plenty of runway so that they can say, hey, there's a thing that we want to work on too. We can we can align our align our work with with a thing that the staff is working on so that it becomes easy to put these things together. And, you know, that's a multi year project.
Okay, Waleed seems to be happy because he cannot unmute. Okay, and any any further questions? Okay, Hans Peter is throwing his hands to the air on the air. Hans Peter, are you frustrated? You want the floor or what? I don't understand you.
Yes, so, oh, it's working. Okay, I'm happy. No, I just wanted to jump on the bandwagon, which has been opened by Sean already. I think it's really necessary to make this information public. Not absolutely necessary to make it public online or immediately, but make it visible to the outside. It's okay, we are doing good things, we are doing great things, but we should make it visible for everybody what we are doing. So thank you and I'm trying to support you.
Thank you and we appreciate the support, but you've also made an excellent segue to the things that Rinalia is going to talk about in just a moment.
Okay, good. And yeah, and to be clear, I mean, you saw the conversation we had with the chapters the other day. And I was actually very surprised that people were asking if there was something internet related beyond PIR, which is completely crazy, given all the work that we do in, I mean, in every single way. So in that sense, I second what Hans Peter was saying. Yeah, that's an important point. Okay, so Rinalia, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely. Good.
Excellent. Okay, so thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here with you today. What I will be presenting to you are the answers to what Hans Peter was just asking for, which is make public what we are doing. And this is one of them. So my presentation would be highlights from the Internet Society's twenty nineteen impact report. You have the full written report in your briefing packet, which has a lot more information. We will be launching the report and sharing it with our community shortly. Let's go to the next slide. The twenty nineteen impact report is our first ever impact report. It is our attempt to capture the difference that we make in the world through our work, which we do with our global community of partners, members and chapters. It may not be evident to a lot of people that we're doing that, but when people review this report, they will see that there is some evidence of that and we do need to get better at it and we will promote the work more in the future. All of the work that we do at the Internet Society are aimed at achieving an open, globally connected, secure and trustworthy internet. In the report, we highlighted four areas of work that we feel had a significant effect on the internet. They are community networks, internet exchange points, routing security and encryption. We are continuing the work in these four important areas of work this year under the twenty twenty action plan to build, promote and defend the internet. And I just want to say one more time, what I'm presenting are the highlights. So you will have more information on the results of the work that we did last year in the report itself. Next slide, please. Our work on community networks in twenty nineteen was focused on addressing the challenge of connecting the unconnected, where forty nine percent of the world's unconnected people live in the most challenging areas to connect. So let's see what we did last year. Let's go to the next slide. The roles that we played in enabling more people to be connected to the internet via community networks were as convener, advocate and enabler. We convened stakeholders interested in enabling community networks across five regions. This builds and strengthens our community of interest on community networks, which I believe is quite significant right now in terms of numbers. We advocated for community networks and worked with governments and intergovernmental organizations around the world to support effective connectivity policies and legislation. And there is evidence that we were quite successful in this last year. And we enabled the development of innovative internet infrastructure solutions by working with our chapters and by convincing development banks and agencies to provide funding for community networks. And you heard from Andrew about this earlier as well. Let's go to the next slide. And here are some of the key outcomes from our effort on community networks in twenty nineteen. We successfully gathered about forty thousand stakeholders face to face and online to advance community networks as a solution for the unconnected. Each of our five regional networks had concrete outcomes which are included in the report. The six development agencies and banks that supported or provided direct funding to community networks initiatives are the ITU's Development Sector, the World Bank, the African Union, the Development Bank of Latin America, the Czech Development Agency and USAID. Also, twenty eight chapters participated in our chapter thon on connecting the unconnected last year. And chapter thons are quite special because they happen within a twenty four hour span. So within a twenty four hour period, our trap chapters developed connectivity solutions for local communities. And here I flagged two examples. South Africa chapter's project Koloveni Wi-Fi Hotspots created a network for three hundred and fifty Kokoveni residents. Sorry, I mispronounced that, Kokoveni residents. And the New York chapter helped New York City mesh expand its urban network to six underserved locations. I think it's amazing that they did that within twenty four hours. Next slide, please. This area of work is in on internet exchange points. Our work on IXP's in twenty nineteen focused on the challenge of high data transit costs, poor service quality and limited local contact creation, which remains pervasive issues for many communities and countries around the world. So let's see what we did last year. Next slide, please. Our role in this area of work is as supporter and partner as well as capacity builder. Since the Internet Society began working this area, we have supported the development of more than forty IXP's worldwide. You don't see it on the slide, but I have it in terms of data. In twenty nineteen, we continued the work. We supported the development of twelve new IXP's around the world. We also helped to scale up the operations of an additional ten IXP's in Africa. Next slide, please. So in terms of, let me just say a little bit about the work that we did last year. In terms of capacity building, we trained more than four hundred local experts online. We also delivered additional training with partners on the ground in nine countries across Asia, the Middle East and North America. We hosted and supported local peering forums to bring IXP operators together for skills development, networking and community building. Partnerships and community building were central to our work on IXP's. The African Peering and Interconnection Forum, fondly known as AFPIF, in twenty nineteen was extremely successful example of this. Over the years, we have worked with local and regional technical fora like NOGS, network operator groups and internet exchange point associations to increase community participation in technical capacity building. And here's where we want to highlight some results, particularly in terms of key outcomes from our IXP work in Africa. particularly in terms of key outcomes from our IXP work in Africa. Internet traffic exchanged locally in Africa has grown by more than 400,000% in the past 10 years. Data from Nigeria and Kenya shows that at least 70% of traffic was exchanged locally, reducing transit costs for internet users in region. And for the work that we're doing this year, and also I'm sure next year, we are going to document more and more in terms of the impact that we're having on the ground. Next slide, please. For our work on Manners, mutually agreed norms for routing security, I apologize for the mistake in the label here, we'll have that changed as soon as this presentation finishes. We focus on the challenge of ongoing leaks and hijacks that undermine security and trust in the Internet. Let's, let's go to the next slide and see what we did. So Manners is a true community-driven initiative. It was created by members of the network operator community for the network operator community. The Internet Society is proud to support this important work since its beginning. We provided hosting for the Manners website, we managed to email this and we provoked the initiative actively all around the world. In 2019, our role in Manners is as catalyst for the initiated Joint Manners IXP Program. This program broadened support for Manners, calling on IXP's around the world to work together to implement crucial fixes that eliminate the most common threats to the Internet's routing system. In 2019, we also served as thought leader and curator for the Manners Observatory. And this observatory is quite special, it was successfully launched. It is a new and vital tool that brings increased transparency to routing operations. It also allows us to see trends in routing security at all levels, globally, regionally and for individual networks. We believe that the observatory is critical for stakeholders to understand the state of routing security and resilience and to support improvements based on evidence. So let's see what the key outcomes are on the next slide. 20 new IXP's across five regions began working together to support routing security. The World Economic Forum recognized Manners as an important initiative for routing security and called on internet service providers around the world to consider joining Manners in its Cyber Crime Prevention Principles for Internet Service Providers Report. There was tremendous growth in the number of network operators and IXP's joining the Manners movement. Manners participant more than doubled. The total at the end of 2019 was 311 participants, representing an increase of 113% from the previous year. Also, through the observatory, Manners participants can view the performance of more than 64,000 individual networks worldwide. I believe that is two-thirds of the individual networks worldwide currently. And the Manners participants can also receive detailed monthly incident reports on their networks. Let's go to the final area of work on the next slide. So the final area of work in the 2019 Impact Report is on encryption. This is a younger area of work, but no less important and urgent. Here we focus on the challenge of governments that are increasingly demanding and securing access to encrypted communications, which undermine security and privacy for all users. Let's go to the next slide. Our role in the work on encryption last year was primarily as advocate. We served as diligent advocate and informed governments and businesses about why it is necessary and in their best interest to maintain ubiquitous encryption. Let's see what the key outcomes are on the next slide. So we've had several encryption-related advocacy successes in 2019. They are all the result of working together with our chapters, partners and allies. This has allowed us to have greater impact than if we had worked alone. Several Internet Society chapters took a leadership role in this area of work, becoming strong advocates and community leaders for strong encryption. In 2019, we advised a civil society effort that led to the removal of problematic texts regarding encryption from a Brazilian anti-crime bill, and we successfully countered the UK government headquarters, communications headquarters' ghost proposal for end-to-end encrypted message access. We also had other smaller advocacy results in Australia and the, in the United States, and this is in the report as well. And also another thing I wanted to flag, our financial support to Let's encrypt has helped increase the number of websites that encrypt their traffic from 150 million to 180 million in 2019. Let's go to the final slide. All of the work that we are highlighting and the outcomes are possible because of our community and partners. We will be building on these four areas of work this year in our Action Plan 2020, and we plan to continue reporting on our impact every year. This is the end of my presentation, I would encourage everyone to review the full impact report if you haven't done so. I think the Internet Society has done some really good work in 2019. The results, the results speak for themselves, and we hope to continue making a difference with our work this year and in the coming years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rinalia, and yeah, I mean, like, let's remember that, you know, we were shifting the focus from, you know, reporting on activities and, and things like that to, to reporting on, on impact. So I think this is kind of a, I mean, a, a complete change, right? It's, it's just like, I, I want to stress this, that we have, we have made a really, really big change, and I myself, at least, for one, I'm, I'm very happy to see this. It's, it's basically, I mean, a lot of steps in the right direction, in my opinion, so, so thanks for that. Any, any questions? Yeah, Richard, please. Okay, while, while they are mute, Richard, Rinalia, we, we had a question before regarding this local traffic in Africa. So, so to understand the figure you were providing, is this traffic that goes from Africa to Africa and it wouldn't go outside the continent, right?
Yes, yes.
But you are not taking into account, let's say, traffic that goes from Africa to Europe, for example?
Basically, we're trying to look at traffic that's retained in Africa. That's the 70% that we're seeing in Kenya and Nigeria, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, but that 30%, which is not retained in Africa, would that include traffic originated in Africa and ending somewhere else?
Yeah.
Okay, that would include, okay. Yeah, no, because the, the discussion we were having is that, basically, what you don't want is that traffic between two African countries would go somewhere else, so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I see, Richard, you have managed to unmute yourself, so please go ahead. Yes, yes, you are.
Great. Yeah, I just wanted to second what Ganzalo was saying about, you know, how nice it is to have this, this kind of impact focus, and, and I think it's really a positive change. I just want to also propose that it might be, might be useful to kind of do some meta-impact analysis in, in that, you know, once we get this report released, it would be good to get, see if we can get some feedback from the consumers of it, the, the community, on whether this is the right type of impact to be reporting on, whether these are the right dimensions for us to be focused on. I think that could be for things like, you know, 2021, running down the road.
Certainly, we can do that, yes.
Yeah, exactly, that, that would be actually a great idea. Because as I said, from our point of view, from the board's point of view, this is exactly what we wanted, so, so, yeah. It's, it's good that we, we understand also if the community is on the same page. I don't see any more questions. Yes, Mike?
I, I just wanna say, I, I, I plan to carry around a copy of your report on my mobile device so I can just pull it out and show people, you know, what we're doing, since I get asked all the time to defend ISOC, I'd say, you know, here's, here's what we're doing. And then I will take them carefully through every screen of the report. So thank you for this, this is really good product, thank you so much, Rinalia.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we have to, yeah, to make sure that this is distributed and people are aware of that. As I said before, especially because of the types of questions we have gotten from people. So obviously, not, not everyone is aware of, of the impact we are making. More questions?
Waleed? I'm, I'm muted, I never muted myself to start with, so. The idea is that I think this, along the same lines that have been mentioned, this is important. And the one thing that we often miss when we talk with chapters is that how do they also convey the message? Because they are the extension of ISOC in some ways. So it's useful to also have this means of, just, just as we have produced this fine report and the summary, we might wanna have some crash courses or some sort of mechanism to relate to, because they are the first interface with communities in these regions. When they usually hear about ISOC, they hear through them. So they don't necessarily go to our website and check this information. So it's also a matter of communication of how these chapters could explain better how the impact is growing and how it's reaching communities as we speak.
I think we have a plan on that.
Okay.
Yes, I believe we do, yeah.
Reminds me of Catchphrase of War, it's a, that's good.
Okay, good. I'm not sure if we have solved the mute and mute problem yet, but anyway. Okay, any, any more questions? I don't see, I was checking all the channels, I'm following. Okay, good, but then we can follow up, I guess, with the Action Plan, right, Andrew? Okay, so Rinalia, you drive that as well?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Can I have the chart, please? Yeah, can I have the chart?
Kevin, Kevin will do that.
Right, here we go. Are you able to see this chart?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, now, now it's clear.
Good. So this chart is very similar to the one that we presented to you last year, but it has been adjusted. So this represents the flow of how we actually produce the annual Action Plan, and this particular one pertains to the 2021 Action Plan that we're going to produce and which you will approve in your last meeting of the year. I believe it's going to be in November. So if you look at the chart, the top layer represents the role of the senior executive team in ISOC. The second layer is where we are engaging community, and there are two community consultation opportunity or input opportunity. In April, Flag in April, in July, the presentation of the actual document, Action Plan, in December, and we wanted to collect community feedback on the 2020 Impact Report and projects in quarter one of 2021. So we are definitely interested in communities' views and how they want us to improve and to take on what Richard was suggesting. What we could do also as part of the April consultation and input gathering is to add a question on how did you think about our impact in 2019 and how do you want us to improve? And what kind of projects do you think we should be implementing within the frame of Build, Promote and Defend for 2021? And in that regard, we could take a look at that and see how we can enhance our effectiveness together. So the third layer that you see in green, that's our finance staff, what they do to help us develop the budget for the whole organization and for the projects that we will be doing. And then the blue layer after that is for the staff that will be actually working on project proposals that will be shortlisted by the senior executive team. And then ultimately, the approved ones will go into the Action Plan document. And so the flow is similar as last year, except that we didn't start as early as last year. Last year, we started the process in February because we'd never had a planning process for the Action Plan. This year, because of all the work that we had to do to launch the projects for 2020 and also to work on the impact report, you will see that there is really no activity related to planning and reporting in Q1 of 2020. So we are going to actually start doing that when the executive team and the senior executive team meet in April. Do you have any questions for me on the way we're going to produce the Action Plan and how we're going to consult community?
Okay, I see a thumbs up, I, I don't see everyone. Can, can we move into the mosaic view? Yeah, now I see people. Okay, any, any reactions? I see thumbs up there, Richard?
Yeah, overall, this, this looks like a, a good plan, I like that there's multiple rounds of going through the community, I think that, that will be helpful.
Yeah.
Only thing, uh, the only minor denim I might make is that there was only one, like, output to the board at the end, I might, I, I.
You want to see drafts? Progress reports you will get, if you want it.
Not like, no, I definitely don't wanna put more, more, not on the staff, but like, maybe if we could get, make sure we get some pointers on the community consultations, go out, just so we can kind of keep an eye on it.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah, and to put that comment into context, I mean, what we are trying to do is, is for the board to be useful in case we have some useful input, as opposed to just rubber stamping what you guys send, because, you know, I mean, like, at the end of the process would be kind of, you know, strange to basically, you know, just, you know, disapprove whatever has been already consulted to the community. So getting a heads up at some point, it would be good just to, to make sure that we are on the same page, we can provide initial input and all that. So it's, it's more about that, not, not just to, to produce more useless work for you guys or, or add more steps to the process, it's, it's just kind of to, to, to provide a useful input if possible. Okay, more questions? And by the way, this is, okay, Andrew, oh, yeah, yeah, I see this, okay. Andrew, please. Oh, he cannot unmute himself either. Okay, good, this is, um, okay, now, oh, no. Yes, now, now, now we can hear you, okay.
So, uh, the, it, it's important to recognize that we believe that the board is part of the community. So while we post all of that stuff, um, you know, we, we would like you to look at it too. And, and we want to hear from you. That, that, that really is something that we're trying to do here. And, you know, we did, we did this the first time last year, um, at the end of the year. I mean, I, I got an earful, for instance, in Montreal from some of the chapters because they said, well, you know, nobody consulted us. And I said, well, did you, you know, did you respond to these consultations? And the answer was, uh, no, in several cases. And, um, and so, you know, we're gonna have to develop this as a habit within the community that really, you know, no, we're gonna put plans out and then we're gonna say to people, you know, please comment on this, but if nobody comments, we're just gonna move ahead. Because I don't, I don't know what else to do, and I don't really think that we should stand around waiting for permission if nobody's gonna comment, we, we wanna press ahead. But, but we really do want the community, and I know this is being recorded, so I'm, I'm hoping that people in posterity will, will listen to it. I, I, we really do want people to, um, to comment on these things, to respond, to say, ah, if you did that one, it would be really interesting, and we would be willing to, we would be willing to, to work on it. Whereas if you did this one over here, we're just not interested in it. We think it's important, but we're not interested in it. And, and we need to have a mix of those things in our plans, right? Some, some of the things that we have in the 2020 Plan are, are sort of small and narrow and, 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 you know, really focused. And we've had some complaints from some of the community that, you know, all of the stuff we're working on is just like, you know, technical issues and there's nothing for the community who are non-technical people to work on. And I, you know, I have been pushing back on that because it seems to me to be false. You know, the encryption work, just to pick one, is obviously not like we're, you know, we're not inventing new crypto suites. The purpose of that is really to, uh, you know, to ensure that good policies are going on. And, and that's really entirely a policy issue. So we're, we're really trying to engage the community, but one of the things that I would like, you know, for you, you all to do, when you have these opportunities to, to engage with anybody in the community, is to remind them that, that's one of the things we're asking for them to do, is to respond to these things and not just, you know, see them as, as one-way communication. We want, we want the feedback because that's how we know that we're working on the things that the community needs.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question, and that's why I, I, I said, heads up. So in that sense, I agree with you that we don't need any special channel, but, but just at least to, you know, send, uh, when, when you guys distribute, you know, the request for feedback, for example, just send something to the board saying like, hey, don't miss this one. Because I agree that, you know, we, we can provide, you know, feedback in the same kind of, you know, loop as the, as the community. So that, that would work, yeah. But just make sure that nobody misses that, because I know that we all handle a lot of email and, you know, it's, uh, it's useful to get a, get a heads up. Okay, good, I see some hands up, Olga, please.
Thank you, thank you for the report, and honestly, I'm very impressed, and, and I think it's, it's a very good document. People always wants to participate, but when the time comes, they don't. That's, that happens everywhere, but we have a saying in Spanish, I don't know if it exists in other languages, no solo que serlos, you know, para serlo, so you don't have to behave, you have to look like you behave. So maybe we have to insist through us, through the chapters, chapter leaders, through other members of the community organizations, insist that they have to comment, that it's important, because everyone wants to comment, but when the time comes, they don't show up. And that's a, that's a waste of time, of your work, of, of the community, also participation possibility. So I think maybe we can work more with chapters and tell them that their participation is important. At least, I myself insist, and we have a chat, a chat list in Latin America, so every time that I can, I insist, but maybe we can reinforce that part. Thank you, and I commend you for all your work.
Yeah, thank you, Olga. Yeah, I mean, it's also true that I've talked to some people, and, and they want us to consult, to be transparent and everything, out of principle. So even if, if they don't intend to comment whatever they, they think is the right thing to do, which I agree with, but I also agree with what Olga said, is that, you know, we should encourage people to, to participate because, you know, if you don't participate, then complaining about the result is a bit ironic, actually, yeah. Exactly. Okay, more questions? I see Mike here, no, that was not a question, any? Okay, I don't see any more questions. Rinalia, that was all of your presentation, or do you have something else?
No, that's it.
Okay, any, any last question? Okay, yeah, this was, yeah, because sometimes people send me like, you know, 3 million messages at the same time, so it's difficult to find your, your questions. So to be clear, my queue is empty right now. Shall we move on? Okay, perfect. So, Rinalia, thanks a lot for, for your work. I think both presentations were really great. As I said, this is such a big change that it's easy to just, you know, think that this was kind of, you know, the typical report we got all the time, but it's not actually. This is very different. So, so we are actually kind of, you know, running new code. And so far, at least, as I said, I'm quite happy with what I'm seeing. So, so this is, this is really good. That's, that's what I can say, actually.
Thank you very much. It's the work of the staff, all staff.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You guys are a team. Okay, so this basically brings us to the end of our, the public part of the meeting, right? So since, since everything else is going to be an executive session, let me ask for AOB at this point, just to make sure that if anyone has any other business to be taken in the public part of the session, it should happen now before we close it. So, any other business? Okay, I see none. Okay, good. Thank you. So we're gonna then close the public part of the meeting. We will basically continue in an executive session, and tomorrow we will resume in the morning, well, or in the afternoon, wherever you are in the world, in executive session as well. And then, please don't forget that tomorrow we will have the ISOC Foundation Board Meeting as well. And that's, that's gonna, that's gonna have also public parts, open-to-observer parts. So if you are interested in following that, please, you know, that, that's the next session you want to follow. Okay, thank you very much. And now, everybody, please click on the, on the other Zoom link and see you there in a minute. Okay, bye-bye.